Not mic'd up, is that better? It's always something with me, technology. At this time, is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda this evening as presented?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. At this time, we'll have Councilman Sevanen lead us in our invitation this evening.
Let us pray. Father, we just, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you for new spring weather. Now, we just thank you that, God, you've brought us together this evening to go about the business of our town. Lord, just ask to give us wisdom and direct us in all of our decision making. Pray it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Sevanen. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of presentate, special presentations this evening. At this time, I would like to call Chief James Bailey. He would like to get a special presentation for us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, Town Staff. Just wanted to report that things are going well at the Sheriff's Office. I am also very happy to report that I will be retiring at the end of next month. So, made it to the end. And I wanted to introduce my replacement to the Council, to the Mayor. This is Captain Tessa Percet. So, she will be replacing me starting May 1st. And I'm also very happy to announce she will be the first female chief deputy that we've ever had at the Sheriff's Office. So, we're very excited. Very excited and just wanted her to introduce herself to the Council. And then, of course, if you have any questions of either one of us while we're here, please afford the opportunity to do.
Great, thank you.
So, very much looking forward to continuing our fantastic relationship with the town of Harrisburg. I've had the pleasure of working here in the past. I was one of our first town investigators. And through the years, it's been a wonderful relationship. Plan on continuing that and just look forward to working with all of you. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Glad to have you on board.
Thank you so much.
And Chief Bailey, congratulations on your retirement. Appreciate your service. Next up, we have Jim Spina and April Sleep who are going to lead us on our 50th anniversary branding partnership presentation. I wasn't through my tweet about yet, so I'll get to that in a minute. I think I jinxed the technology already. Sorry about that. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you guys are doing well. All right. So, I'm here this evening with Jim Spina, Parks and Recreation Director, to talk about our 50th anniversary branding partnerships. Maybe. Okay. So, as you know, we have the following logos. We have our celebrating 50th year logo. That's for our general 50th celebration. We have our actual celebration logo, and then we have our two shields. And those are used on our various new event logos. So, local businesses would like to partner with the town to help celebrate its 50th anniversary. And they seek the following: permission to utilize the 50th anniversary event and 50th diamond logo, and then permission to utilize the town's fonts and subsequent marketing materials, product logos, digital imprint flyers, and merchandise. So, here is a fun example. Uh-oh. Hold on. James, can you put the video for me? Do you mind doing that? Can you put the video to the right for me? So, April's Burger Bar wants to make a special Harris Burger. April owns Harris, April owns April's Burger Bar. She makes contact with Jim, the Parks and Recreation Director, and pitches her idea to him. Jim brings April into a meeting with the 50th anniversary, oh, this is the old, the old presentation. But plot twist, it's not to the 50th anniversary committee. It's actually to town management and to me and to Jim Parks Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director. So, April pitches the marketing materials on the right of the screen to the committee. And April works with the Communications Director to make sure she is using the logos and fonts correctly. Residents and visitors of Harrisburg now have a great burger to try and are excited to come to the 50th anniversary celebration on October 14th. April's Burger Bar sells out of the Harris Burger due to the hometown excitement. Love it. All right. So, implementation process, the local businesses must work with the town's 50th anniversary committee. Again, this is the wrong presentation, but they're actually going to be working with town management, with the Parks Recreation Director, and with myself. And then, I will ensure that they obtain the following: permission to use the logos and fonts and guidelines in which the logos and fonts can be used. And we also are going to be utilizing the current policies that all of the Parks and Recreation vendors are using at all the events. So, it'll be the same process as every other vendor at all of our special events. It's really lagging here. But the last slide says questions. Any questions? Council, are there any questions? It'll be a good one. Stay tuned.
It's appreciated, Council. And obviously, you know, I think it's pretty clear what we're doing here is trying to make the celebration more broad and allow our community partners to participate in it. One of the problems that we had run into in that process is, do we officially allow them to use logos and officially use the town stuff? Or is it more than an unofficial capacity? So, although staff has the ability to make this decision, I thought it was prudent because we really don't do that in any other setting except for the 50th to come up and present that to the Council, have a motion in a second, and get official Council permission to use just the 50th branding that would go through our current policies and procedures, but would ultimately need my final sign off in order to do that. When we discussed how to do this, you saw it was there in the first presentation that it was the 50th committee. But really, it's important that the town control its branding and make sure that it meets town policies and current town procedures. So, what they would do is petition April. It would then be pitched to Jim. If they're in agreement that this meets our brands and our standards and our policies, then they would bring it to Lee and I for final review and sign off.
And something I forgot to add on the new presentation was, there's actually a form that's going to be embedded on our website. So, under the Communications tab, there's a Town Partnerships tab that they could fill out an entry or an interest form, and it'll go to me, and then we'll field all those requests.
And I envision this being kind of similar to what the Visitor Convention Bureau is doing now with, like, Burger Madness. And, you know, each, each restaurant has their own burger and, and they're kind of, you know, voting weekly or whatever. I anticipate vendors wanting to do special menu items, you know, special sales, special events, and to actually say, hey, this is part of the 50th celebration of the town. So...
Well, just to give you another idea, I don't want to do this, is that this kind of came through a kind of a shoot, Brian, a week ago, where you try to reach out to all of our restaurants, little restaurants, and come up with this 50th anniversary item. Then you get a little punch, punch card. Much while they get them up there, they bring it to you. That serves our businesses, right, as well, people, and potentially gives them a little bit more of a, they feel like a part of, feel like a part of the process. So, we're going to work on it. And as we didn't talk about having some kind of a specialty week or specialty month with that kind of food. Talking to Brian, he kind of put that up, we're including the features behind that. And so, we'll probably add that a little piece of it later on. So, it's obvious.
Do, do we want to offer an incentive to offset the cost that whatever these restaurants may have to go through? Whether it be to reprint a menu or something like that. I mean, I don't know what the dollar amount is at $250. I don't know. I've been out of restaurants for many years, so I could tell you what it takes to run a slick of menus.
Yeah, I think it would be proposal specific. So, those are things we could consider depending on, you know, whether it's an event they want to do. We might be able to help participate in kind. You know, we might have a staff that we can put there. We might be able to, you know, print signs. If it's a menu item, that might be something that they, they'll cover the in-store stuff. But can you guys put this out in your newsletter and list all the businesses and, and, you know, that they're participating or something like that? We don't know what it looks like until we see who's actually going to participate. But we've contemplated that, yeah, there would be some town participation if there's a partnership there.
Very exciting. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Can we get that officially approved, Mayor? Just, and I think we see a lot of head nods, but I just wanted to get a motion second, so it's on the record.
So, have a motion on the floor to approve. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our third and final special, special presentation this evening is a presentation of the sidewalk grants for the Stallings and Hickory Road Expansion Project. And Public Works Director Mallory Hodgson, we'll get that to us this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to present tonight about the Hickory Ridge Sidewalk Grant that we received through the Caris Rowan Metropolitan Planning Organization. The total project award was just over 2 million, or sorry, just over 1.6 million. Total project cost is just over 2 million. The town contribution of 20% is just over 400,000. I've got an exhibit to the right showing the, the stretch of sidewalk that would be constructed with this grant, shown in pink. The other sidewalks that are shown on this, existing sidewalk is shown in green. Proposed town constructed sidewalk is shown in red, and developer constructed sidewalk is shown in blue. We are learning this new clicker. I'm sorry. So, a few highlights of this project. It's consistent with the goals of the town and the Caris Rowan MPO to promote development of integrated bicycle and pedestrian networks. It'll improve pedestrian safety in the corridor. We have documented support from Harrisburg Town Council and community leaders, and it's been highly requested by town residents. We expect minimal to no impacts to Bat Creek. We plan to use a prefabricated bridge structure, which was the driver of the cost and cost of the project, and ultimately led us to seeking grant funding. If there's any questions about the grant or anything I can answer, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Could you go back to the first line?
Absolutely.
So, you've got Hickory Ridge in pink, but Stallings in red.
Correct. So, the Stallings in red is, is town proposed constructed sidewalk. There, it's two, it's really three separate projects. So, the, the grant that we obtained funding for is for that pink section. And then, the two red sections, we're calling those Stallings Road Sidewalk Phase 1 and Phase 2. Those are being funded through the bond, the transportation bond.
Okay. So, does that change the timeline on Stallings?
No. The, these are, those will be separate projects.
And what is our timeline on Stallings?
We're currently working on easement acquisition right now for Phase 1. Phase 2 is about 50% design, and we've started easement acquisition on Phase 2 as well.
Construction when?
Hoping to start construction by the end of the summer on both. The bond funds have to be spent by November 2024.
Sorry for the specific question.
No problem.
I have folks asking.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're hoping to have a contract for both of those construction projects on the Council Agenda, you know, July or August.
Thank you.
I was thinking, since there's schools involved there, is there any way to move that up a little bit so that the construction can go on throughout the summer?
We can try. Yeah. I think for Phase 2 Stallings, it'll be permitting that will slow us down. And on Phase 1, easement acquisition, that's slowing us down.
Which one's Phase 1 and which one's Phase 2?
Phase 1 is the more westerly one, and Phase 2 is east, in the, pointing north.
Can I sidetrack you for one second, since you're standing there?
Absolutely.
And then Rob's here too, so you can, yeah. And it depends on who you asked. Who owns the, the roundabouts? Whether they're town or whether they're NCDOT, right?
That's a great question. So, we have a, I feel like you're probably asking more about landscaping in the center.
Well, yeah, I mean, or is the, my first question is, is there plans to put some type of planning in those? And then, second question is, is do we have that built within the UDO in the future to ensure that there are plantings in the future?
Yes, both are designed to be planted. I actually just got the permit for the Camilla Gardens, Harrisburg Elementary School plantings this, like, this calendar year. The Division of NCDOT that reviews the plantings is just separate, so it wasn't reviewed as part of the plan process. So, there's, I have approved plans for the planting of that one. And the way that that will work is, the town had to enter a third-party maintenance agreement with NCDOT on those. So, the developer is responsible for installing the plantings, but will, the town will be responsible for maintenance of the plantings. Oh, which is good, you know, depending how you look at it. Obviously, that's a cost to the town to maintain. We feel like it's pretty minimal, and we have the existing staff to support the maintenance. And it gives us a little bit of freedom in what we want to do there as far as the plantings.
Will there still be a need to mow at some point or?
So, they've got them mowed Friday. I heard there was a little bit of a safety issue. I'd wanted them to hold off on, on mowing until the grass was more established. I wanted them to, like, weed and feed it one more time before we mowed. But they went out there with weed eaters and got it cleaned up so that you could see over them. So, um, I don't have a timeline on when it'll get planted, since we just got that permit. But I'll follow up with the developer and let you know when I hear back.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, where the pink intersects Harrisburg Veterans, I can't remember. Is there a crosswalk there now?
No, because there's no sidewalk on the other side of the road. So, this project would include a crosswalk there.
That's tied to the lights and all that good stuff. Because that, people heading south on Harrisburg Veterans hanging a right don't look right.
That's correct.
And just roll through it if they can. So, I want to make sure at least it's safe for pedestrians.
Agreed, yeah.
I figured you had that under control.
And there'll be a second light there by the time this is installed as well at Hickory Ridge and Stallings.
Correct.
It'll be tied in with the veterans.
Oh.
That's something that, I think it's Camilla has to pay for that.
Camilla, yeah.
Is Tom Query, that's not a roundabout, is it?
No realignment. With the, how he property, probably, no, it'd be a realignment of that intersection.
Yeah, there's a dirty rumor that was going to be a roundabout, and I'm like, no, I don't think so, but...
I think that there was once a discussion about it being a roundabout, but...
DOT has it on their long-range plan as a roundabout, but they don't fund anything. So, the chances of that getting builders a roundabout, I mean, they would have to put money into it. So, I think they would like it to be that. There's no identified funding to...
So, we're charging for it as a regular intersection.
Yeah.
So, since you're talking about that Hickory Ridge, it brings up a question that resonates at one of the emails that we've been getting. You know, Rob and I, and I think you and Mrs. Hodge said that it had been shipped to, to Rauling about having those turn lanes, double turn lanes onto veterans off of Hickory Ridge.
Right.
So, will we get an answer on that, that we correlate, where we don't put these sidewalks down? And then, we do anything there, getting the double lanes, turning left?
The short answer is yes, because that decision is going to be well before construction would start on something like this. But I wouldn't anticipate that.
Having to change.
Do widen anyway. So, but yeah, that's, I mean, that should be weeks, not, you know, this is something that I'd asked Mallory to do the presentation on for one major reason, which is, you know, the grant amount that we've gotten here. So, the 49 project, Transportation Project is the largest grant the town's ever gotten. The Caldwell Road is the second largest. If not for those two, this would be the largest grant that the town has ever received. So, I didn't want Mallory to sell herself short or her staff in the fact that this is a big get. We're very proud of, of getting this 80% grant. It's $1.6 million. Residents don't have to pay in order to, to do a pretty substantial project. Bat Creek has a, has a very wide flood plain. So, getting, you know, that bridge paid for with federal funds is something we're really happy about, we're really proud about. And I'm wanting to make sure the community and the Council was reminded, because we've, we've spoken about it a few times, but now that it's official. You know, about six weeks ago, this was approved by Ron and their committee at TAC. And we couldn't be happier that we're now continuing to get these grants. It's been a focus of our staff, and they've really outperformed on the expectations that management has set firm.
And as long as we're ready to apply for more, there'll be more coming. So, where's the opportunity time dimension? So, I hate to mention this, but there's things like the opportunities. So, you were talking about that, and I mentioned it under prior management is, and even when we redid the hallet, there was a decision and question asked about extending Stallings Road over to Caldwell. But we've been told the topography and all that would be quite costly. But if we're going after funds now through the MPO, this seems like something that needs to be reconsidered, possibly to extend Stallings over to Caldwell, because I still hear from residents, the traffic backing up every day coming around the curve at Robinson Church.
Yeah, we can, we can follow up on that. My, my knee jerk is that I don't think it's, that it's not economically feasible. I don't think it's physically feasible, because we've built our public workstation at the end of where that would connect through if we were to take it all the way through. So, we'd have to, one, tear our public works building down and our gas pumps, and then probably at least one of the businesses there to tie it all in. So, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's the...
We'd have to commit exactly there, though, because there is another indention on down closer to, to Tom Query Caldwell. But it's just something to look at. Down below the, the school, their own, on Caldwell, there's an indention for, like, a stub right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can look at that. I, I'd always...
You'd have to go across the creek and get that stub right, though. I'm looking at it now, where that stuff is.
I think that comes into, you know, other things. I've been reached out and asked questions about recently, which is our, our transportation plan, our long-range transportation plan, our cross connections, our east-west routes, north-south routes. And, you know, we have, we have some on, but, you know, every time we go to connect a road and open traffic up where it wasn't before, there tends to be quite a process in getting that done. So, I'm happy to look at it and see, see what that is.
Because it's seeing like the appropriate times, since you're talking about MPO grants.
Any other questions or comments from Mallory? Thank you, Mallory.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work on that as well.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into the public comment portion of this evening. Anyone wishing to address Council may do so during this time. Please state your name and address for the record. Be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said. We did have a sign-up sheet out front. No one signed up. But is there anybody in the room that would like to speak during public comments this evening? If not, we'll move to anyone joining us via Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during public comments? Please raise your hand, and we will call on you. No public comments this evening. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as proposed this evening?
Motion to approve.
So, motion to approve is our second.
So, I do.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Communications, and we will start with town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council Mayor. Everybody in attendance, a couple of quick updates. The budget is what's taking up most of our time right now. As Council knows, we're in, we're in the full throes of, of that. So, I wanted to thank you for, you thank each of you for getting the council exercise back to us. We'll take this week reviewing that. I was able to get just a quick five-minute preview of the summary document that Lee was able to prepare last week as they kind of rolled in. Him and Brian were able to tally these, and it looks like we had broad consensus on, on almost everything. I don't remember how many items were on that council exercise, but if there were 50 on there, 47 of them had broad consensus. And, and so, we're, we'll probably only roll about two or three items into our draft two meeting, which will be the 29th, fastly approaching. And I'll remind the community to either show up or tune in for that as well, because you'll get a, a pretty finished preview of our final managers' recommended budget with only a handful of outstanding items. And those will be the couple of items that we, we didn't have broad consensus on in the budget exercise. And we intend to discuss any other outstanding items that we've had from the other workshops, like the turf fields, and whatever else we can get on to that agenda without wearing you guys out. And we do plan to, to make a quick turnaround after that meeting. If we can get consensus on the, on those couple of outstanding items, we'll have our first public hearing for the budget in April. And this year, that'll be April 17th, because we've pushed it back due to spring break. Everybody being out of town, we, we want to make sure that we're giving everybody the opportunity to come and attend. One of the major items, one of major feedback items that we'd gotten in last year's budget was that decisions were already kind of written in stone before the public really got a chance to comment. So, we've taken that to heart, and we've moved our budget process up an entire month this year. That was no small feat. My staff is exhausted and fed up with me at this point, but they've done a really good job of, of hitting all those deadlines. And we're, we'll be fully prepared to have that recommended budget available in April and ready for adoption in May. And that will give the community that extra 30 days, should anything come up in the budget that is, you know, needs to be delayed. We need to push a month, something like that. It is possible. But it certainly was, was a task, getting it done. It was harder than I thought it would be. I thought it'd be a little bit easier, but, but we got it done. So, to recap, March 29th, Draft 2, first public hearing, Managers Recommended Budget on April 17th. We will have Council exercise summary sheet sent out to Council within about a week. So, we'll get, we'll get all that put together so that you'll have a preview of what'll be on that agenda and what items had broad consensus, what those numbers were, and what items were in the 4-3 range that we need a little bit more commitment on to move forward. Also, I want to let you know that the Economic Development RFQ is out. So, as soon as we get proposals or qualifications back on that, we'll, we'll select a firm to help us finalize our scope. And then, we'll be off and running on getting a strategic plan for economic development. In the meantime, while we're doing that, we're also working in-house on a few policies and procedure updates on economic development in order to, you know, kind of fill that gap until we have a final strategic plan. So, we do plan on finalizing and bringing some incentive policies and things to counsel for us to have on the books until our strategic plan is finalized or finished. That way, we're not at a disadvantage to the surrounding communities. So, most of our surrounding communities have some type of... That way, we're not at a disadvantage to the surrounding communities. So most of our surrounding communities have some type of, of written, incentive plan for either a downtown area or broadly throughout their community. And, we'll be bringing some stuff for you guys to review in order to make us competitive in, in that same arena. We've also advertised for the assistant planning director, which you guys were able to approve at one of the budget workshops. So that is out there and we hope to, interview and fill that rather quickly. And I also just want to again praise, our staff across the board. Obviously, engineering showed tonight our, our grants, but we're doing a really good job, on acquiring additional outside funding that is not property tax based. You know, at this point, our general fund, our total budget funds are a majority property tax, but not, not a large majority. And then we, we get a substantial amount of our money, either through grants or sales tax or fees, development fees, our, revenue funds or enterprise funds generate most of our, of our revenue for the town. So we're really proud with diversifying our revenue streams. And that is not something we've done here for a long time. And our staff has really taken to that and, and been able to execute in that arena. So I do want to praise our staff on those grants and just our staff in general, on our ability to both improve our processes and then do it in a more efficient, way. So not only do I think our staff in general is doing more with less, but they're doing it faster. And I think our, our budget process this year is a really good example of, you know, our folks being able to, you know, get it right and, and do that on an accelerated scale. So I just a shout out to our staff because I know they've, been working really hard here the first three months, but really for the past year, I, I couldn't be more impressed with, with their performance, and what we've been able to do. So with that, I will kick it back to you, Mayor, and that's it for my updates.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Next up, we have Brian Lee, who will give our finance reports this evening.
Thank you. That was a perfect segue to my finance report. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
He wants another shout out for that investment interest money that he's fishing for.
As long as it's not sitting at S V H D bank.
No, we avoided that one. That's why they say commercial paper is not fully guaranteed. All right. So here's the finance report as of February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. This is a look at our operational revenues and expenditures in the general government portion of the general fund. So for revenues, first tax collections have reached ninety-seven percent for the fiscal year. So we are on pace with motor vehicle collections to be at about a hundred and, hundred and two, hundred and three percent. And that's of our budgeted funds. So we always, you know, step back the budget just a little bit from the actual levy for uncollected balances. And so we'd like to see that always reach a hundred or go slightly over. So that's not unusual to see that number. Total general fund revenues of about eighty-nine percent, two-thirds of the way through the year. Water and sewer fund and storm water are both right on target at sixty-eight and sixty-seven percent respectively. And as you can see for our general fund, general government departments here, they all range from about forty to upper fifty percentage. And council is down at twenty-one percent due to the special projects budget. This is a look at the remainder of our general fund departments as well as our two enterprise funds. All departments are in the forty to fifty percent range. I do want to point out that you see one down arrow next to planning and zoning. That's due to the professional services budget amendment that we processed last month. And so just that, that, those funds were unutilized this month. And so that shows a decrease from the prior month. Salaries across the town are at fifty-two percent, up seven percent from last month. We'll briefly go through some of our projects. These are single year projects. Fire station number one upgrades, the first item on the list there is up to about sixty-five percent. Portions of this project that have been completed so far include pressure washing and sealing the building, L E D lights and an awning. And the apparatus concrete pad is the last item to be done there. And that should be completed in the next month and a half or so. ADA sidewalk project number two on the list there. Staff has scheduled the second round of trip hazard improvements and those are taking place in Litchfield. The third item on the list is Lucas Court build out. That contract has been signed and the work should take approximately three to six weeks to complete, and finally provide those residents with their, with their roads. And everyone's excited about that. Powell Bill paving is at about fifty percent now. That was planned to be completed by the end of February. But with some weather delays over the past month, that should be wrapped up by the end of this month. The pond improvements at Harrisburg Park, the water level was raised by moving the outlet pipe up in that pond. And further landscaping and walking path improvements are currently being designed to improve aesthetic of that pond. And lastly on this list is the stormwater spot improvements. There was a contract on the consent agenda tonight, for improvements to be made to Hillcrest and Willow. So those will take place over the next several months. This is a look at our multi-year projects under design. I really only want to point out one as these are just having kind of standard progress here. And that's the transportation bond projects. Those are all up about five or ten percent. Design is moving along as, as expected on those. And we heard from Mallory where some of those are heading as far as the sidewalks tonight. This is a look at our multi-year projects under construction. Fire station number two training facility, the training ground containers and tower have all been installed. Staff has started to use those already, but is also continuing to outfit those containers to get them fully built out. And a fence is being added around the perimeter of that entire project and that will complete that project. The sidewalks and highway forty-nine corridor projects under the transportation bonds, design is complete on those and easement acquisition is underway. So within a couple of months, we'll see construction contracts presented on those projects. Move on to our equipment projects for the year. M C T replacements, those are mobile computer terminals for the, fire trucks and different apparatus. Those are nearing the final purchases of needed equipment. And they are installing those items as they're programmed. They're working with the city of Concord Dispatch to program all those and get those ready. A couple other items on the list here under parks and rec and water sewer headings. The R T V, the batting cage, the fitness equipment and the generator for Bentley Hills. All of those have been ordered and we're just awaiting delivery or installation of those. And the M C Ts for the assistant chief and division chief have been moved to complete. So they're down at the bottom of the list now. Those have been fully programmed and placed into service. And those kind of act as a guide for the rest of that project for the other four N C T replacements. This is a look at our vehicles here. We only have one to report on this month, and that is the bucket truck under environmental protection and water and sewer. That truck was purchased and delivered. They're currently installing outfit items and it will be placed in service shortly. And we are hoping for progress on the rest, but we sit at about fifty percent on all of those. And lastly, our professional services projects, we've added the strategic economic development plan to the top of this list. So we'll begin to report on that. The R F Q did go out on Friday and that contract should be presented back if everything stays on schedule, presented for your consideration in May. The Parks Master Plan, that R F Q should go out this week. And it also has a target date to bring to you of May. And lastly, the water model and the C I P for water and sewer, the scoping meeting was held the week of March sixth, to begin these projects. So a, a little bit of progress on these professional services projects that we haven't seen in a little while. Like Rob said, we're pretty much just focusing on the budget right now in, in finance. So draft one has been presented for council comments. The council exercise has been distributed and received back. And our upcoming meetings, as Rob mentioned, are March twenty-ninth and April seventeenth. And then again, our ARPA budget is at about four point five million to appropriate, given the items that are on the agenda tonight. That number has been brought down to about three point nine million. So that's what we have left to appropriate in the next about eighteen months or so. And I welcome any questions you have.
Thank you, Brian. Councilor, are there any questions on the finance report?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't keep track, but I think it's law enforcement update time. So Captain Missmer will have me. If I mess that up, I'm sorry, Chief Dunn. I'll get it back on track.
Mayor, Council. February numbers, three thousand eighty law enforcement related activities. Oh, do I have? Well, didn't click that way then. There we go. We're getting high tech. Three thousand eighty law enforcement related activities, two thousand one hundred and seventy-three security checks on homes and businesses, four hundred and forty-eight traffic stops with a non-emergency response time of seven minutes, six seconds. Other than that, it's been a very slow month in February. I'll take it. We didn't have anything crazy happen in the town. And hopefully I get to say that next month too. A few things I would like to say is thank you for the town support and everyone that volunteered to help with the drive through queue to benefit the injured Deputy John Brady. It was a great event and I appreciate that. Also, as Brian was mentioning in his report, the only thing he had to talk about was the bucket truck. I wish he was talking about patrol cars and that they had come in and that we had paid for them and we were moving ahead, but Ford, somehow oversold somewhere between thirty and forty thousand cars. I don't know how, but they did. We were there the day that the fleet opened and got our orders in first, thinking that we would be great. Now they're saying we may not get any cars from Ford this year at all. Ford has not, exactly, exactly what I said. What, gotta be kidding. How does a company that big not have a cutoff? And you, I missed, you missed four thousand, I get it, but thirty to forty thousand? So we've asked them how they're going to distribute these cars out that are being built. They can't give us answers. Normally, we would be able to go on to their portal. We'd already see vans assigned to our vehicles because we should be getting them this month and next month. We have no vans assigned as a sheriff's office whatsoever. And we ordered a few dozen cars. We did get two F one fifty vans assigned to us and that's it. We've called Ford and asked when they plan on releasing any of these vehicles or the information on how they're going to do it. And they were not able to give us any details whatsoever. Now, the good news is our fleet here in Harrisburg is in pretty good shape. I do have two older cars I was really hoping to get rid of, but, I can't let them die. I really, really want to get rid of Dodgers, but it's not working out for me. It's like a ghost just keeps hanging around. But all in all, we're still in very good shape with our cars. We could survive another year if we need to. But hopefully I'm going to be able to come to you in the next month or two and say our cars are being built and shipped. I'll let you know when I find out something. Any questions for me?
Is traffic control going to be motorcycle based or car based?
Both. We do have a new motorcycle in this year's budget, a new B M W, because ours is to two thousand eleven and parts are getting very hard. And then the cars that will be that traffic unit are on order. That's part of that order. So we're going to have to wait and see what, what happens.
When do, what is the ETA, your thought of having that crew up?
I'm hoping within the next few months, but I cannot guarantee staffing is always fluid. We are down, you have your two traffic units that you just approved that started on January the first that are open and we have two other vacancies. With manpower wise, we still have plenty, but I have to at least fill one of those two original spots. The next person I get hired will, go ahead and move the train into a traffic position. And we'll start backfilling from there, but sooner the better.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Missmer. Chief Dunn for our fire report this month.
All right, we've gone high tech as well. Or try to anyway.
His clickers.
Hey. So as far as community outreach, this is for the month of February. Everyone's aware of the Read Across America. Was came to Harrisburg among other schools, our station three bishop, went to Hickory Ridge, elementary and participated in the Read Across America this past month. I think they had a good time. One of the individuals, grand, granddaughter was in the class. So I'm sure that was pretty special. Last week, we traveled to the frozen tundra of Nebraska and did the final inspection on, the ladder truck that we've had on order for quite a while. So this is a replacement for our two thousand five model that's in station one's location. Again, it's very technologically advanced, some, some new technologies on this truck that we were able to test out. So, we appreciate the, the support of buying the new truck and look forward to putting it in service. We expect, we'll probably see it sometime in May. It'll come to us and then it'll go to the dealer to install some things that are out of Denver. And then it'll come to us and we'll actually take delivery of it. So our February stats, we changed this up a little bit this month to give you a better idea instead of so many different categories. So you should be seeing this, a good attend call can be anything from our dispatch and we're canceled in route, could be a controlled burn or just no incident found. We had forty-eight of those. False alarm could be a commercial or residential alarm. We had eighteen of those. Service calls consist of various items, lifting assistance, smoke detector checks, or just other service calls within the community. EMS was eighty-three, actual fires of some sort was four. And then again, rupture or explosion, these were electrical malfunctions with no ignition. Our average response time last month was four minutes and fifty-three seconds from dispatch to the first arriving unit. And these are emergency responses only. And you can see the call location there as far as a percentage. So you saw on the last, the last slide of our, our actual responses. So, if we have a commercial fire alarm or residential fire alarm, more than one truck go. So our, our alarm, procedure is two engines and a ladder. So that's why you see these numbers a little bit higher. So these are each time that these particular apparatus actually went out the door. So, again, ladder thirty-one on Morehead Road Station continues to be the busiest. So throw a little graph in there as well. Make it pretty. Wanted to include the best shot of the training facility we could get, which was on the left. We talked about it during the budget session on the right is, is a thermal energy class that took place in February. So we threw in some pictures of that. We do have one lateral firefighter that will begin, or began on February fourteenth. So I think that gets us down to six openings right now. Last but not least, some of the operational updates. We did attend a meeting with Concord and Kannapolis Fire Department to go over our equipment, our water, water rescue equipment that we do, that we do have. As a matter of fact, this past month, our, our crew responded to the Rocky River in Midland for a reported missing person in the water. So we threw in a couple of pictures of that. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Dunn?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of mayor's comments. Since our February council meeting, we celebrated National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, and National Engineers Week. So we're very thankful for both of those groups and everything that they do in our community. I did want to remind council and the public that the chamber in partnership with our local school system and community colleges will be hosting, their career connections day. And that is tomorrow at the Cabarrus Events and Arena Facility down on forty-nine. They are changing it up a little bit from years past and, and divvying this up into two events. So you've got in the morning time from eight to noon is where a seven hundred and fifty plus, Cabarrus County Schools, including Kannapolis City Schools and the community colleges. You'll have some of the juniors and seniors, attending that to see what type of business and career opportunities they have. We will have representation from the town of Harrisburg at that event tomorrow as well. And then later in the evening from five to seven, that is open for the public. I think they're calling that the adult version of the job fair. So if anybody can stop by or if you're looking for career opportunities, it's gonna be a great spot to find that. Rob and I presented town updates to the Harrisburg Business Alliance a few weeks ago, and we are teaming back up again, costumes in tow, to present at the Harrisburg Business Network. It really is a great opportunity to speak with our, our local businesses and, for them to kind of hear what our, what our updates are and provide that engagement. And last but not least, I did want to recognize Mallory on a great presentation that she gave this week at the Regional Stormwater Partnership in Charlotte. Councilman Dellinger and I both attended that, learning quite a bit. And we're hoping to have one of the guest presentations for council soon. Are really the importance of protecting our water resources in our community. And with that, I'll maybe, are there any council comments this evening?
I'll jump out for one second. Jim, kudos to you and your staff. I know you guys are always looking for creative ways.
Um, I know you guys are always looking for creative ways to think outside the box or come up with a new way to do something and, um, I have heard nothing but positive, positive, positive vibes from the high schoolers being able to coach this year. Well, my goodness, there, you know, there's a rivalry between some of the, uh, high schoolers and, uh, I got a, a late update over the weekend that one of my neighbor's kids, he was, uh, coaching and you know, they weren't expected to do anything and then they went it off. So, you know, it's good stuff in the community. So, thank you for, uh, doing that and engaging our community any way possible.
It's a good connection, too. It's good for the young ones to see the older kids. We, we want to build on that. We're gonna continue to build that, especially as our program registration number grow. We really need to.
It was. It was great at the, um, high school baseball and softball games. There were quite a few parks and rec, um, participants. They are coming to see their coach. He were actually playing, so very nice. Any other council comments? It's a quiet bunch this evening. With that, we will move into our one and only public hearing this evening. And Zach will come up with the U D O text amendments.
If, um, if this was the fall and it was Monday night football, I would go through it more quickly, but I think I'll just leisurely go through it, Rob, tonight.
We're on our streak here.
Yeah, right. All right. Which way? Right? There we go. Um, good evening, Mayor Council. Good to be here, uh, for a public hearing on a text amendment. This is the first text amendment since I've been here. So, this is very exciting for me. And it's the first text amendment to the new U D O. So, that's also a first, but this is a text amendment consider um, or consideration of a text amendment to add a separation requirement, uh, for tobacco stores, vapor shops, and retail sale of C B D and hemp-based products from each other and certain other uses. And add a definition for retail sale of C B D and hemp-based products include on the list of permitted uses allowed by special use permit. So, that's a mouthful. We will, uh, break it down and, um, again, um, the request is to address, uh, the separation between those uses and, um, from other uses. Um, and also to add a C B D and hemp-based products, we can talk about what that is, uh, and include those on a list of permitted uses also by special use permit, as is the case currently for tobacco and vape shops. And again, it really, um, the purpose is to ensure consistency across the board, um, so that we don't have one type of use with one standard and another use with another standard is very similar. Our recommendation is for, uh, approval. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval at their two twenty-one meeting. Also want to, um, just remind everyone, uh, and Rich can, um, confirm this, uh, that this is a public hearing, uh, but you do not need to have a second public hearing. So, if you, so choose, you can approve this amendment tonight. You don't have to, but you don't need to have a second, uh, hearing. And so, um, continuing on, um, on the tobacco and vapor shops, uh, again, the new, the new ordinance uh, listed these as permitted uses by special use, but there was no separation requirement, uh, either from each other or for any other use that might potentially be negatively impacted. Um, the U D O does include a fifteen-hundred-foot separation requirement, uh, from each of the use and from other uses for electronic gaming establishments. And really, that's the driving force behind this is to make it consistent across the board. Um, and so, what we're proposing is to add a provision to the standards uh, that requires that these, uh, shops, uh, be subject to the same separation requirement from each other as well as the uses you see listed on the screen. And, uh, we'll, uh, I'll show you, uh, uh, an image in just a minute, give you a better sense of how that would work. Um, in terms of C B D and hemp-based products, we're gonna add that to the list. Um, it is certainly something that is, um, unfortunately become more mainstream. Um, and I know there's a lot of, um, P S As and, and other concerned health, uh, professionals regarding, uh, youth uh, use of vape, uh, products. And so, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we're addressing this ahead of time. Um, and, um, with C B D and, and, uh, hemp-based products, that they also would be subject to the same requirements as vape and tobacco shops and also require a special use permit. So, if somebody wanted to come in and open up a shop, they would need to go through the Board of Adjustment. In terms of the use table, um, you can see in red, we're adding the C B D and hemp-based products with special standards. And we're amending the standards for tobacco, uh, and vapor shops. And so, those would be changes to the, uh, use table. And then the actual text amendment, uh, is here. Um, again, it is applicable both to principal and accessory use. Um, and it would involve, again, the separation requirement from like uses. Uh, so vape to vape, tobacco, tobacco, tobacco to C B D, um, all interchangeable. They would all have to be a minimum fifteen-hundred feet from each other and also fifteen-hundred feet from any of the uses that you see listed. And again, this is the standard right now for electronic gaming establishments. For C B D and hemp-based products, it's a new provision, but it mirrors the, uh, provision, a standard proposed for the, uh, smoke and, uh, vapor shops. Um, and again, we want to be consistent across the board. And so, I know everyone is wondering, what is the definition for C B D and hemp-based products? And here it is. Uh, a business establishment for which more than fifty percent of sales are based on the retail sale of products related to or derived from C B D oil, uh, or hemp. And this includes, but is not limited to oils, vitamins, supplements, food, personal care and garments. And so, it's a pretty all-inclusive, uh, definition, uh, but I've done a little bit of research on this and I think sometimes, uh, the C B D might be the, um, uh, at least what, what is the, uh, the lightning rod, but there's a lot of other things that potentially you know, may draw in and, and, uh, so we want to make sure that this is pretty broad, but I think this all covers pretty well. Uh, so, I wanted to just touch on this and I, and I've got a, um, a handmade map. Um, so I was a geography major, uh, cartography back in the day when you drew with pen and ink. And if you made a mistake, it was, uh, three hours erasing it. Uh, but that is, uh, ancient history. But I do have a map that will give you an illustration. So, what I did was make the, um, vape shop that was approved, uh, back in January. Was it January or was December? Time flies. Um, uh, Achilles Plaza, and this shows you a fifteen-hundred-foot radius, uh, for that, uh, tobacco and vape shop. And it shows a list of all the uses that will be part of the standards, uh, and you can see all those fall within that fifteen-hundred-foot radius. And so, this amendment essentially would have precluded this from being located in this area. Um, and the reality is that, you know, we could shift this down a little bit further. Uh, we're gonna run into same situation. You've got a lot of schools, daycares, obviously, uh, park, um, residential and et cetera. So, this just gives you an image, uh, I think to, to help, uh, reinforce the point. Any questions at this point? I want to just leave this up here because there might be, yeah.
So, if you look at the two vape shops that we have today.
Right.
Are they excluded from this because it's after the fact?
Yes. So, so, th- they were approved before the amendment, uh, so they're grandfathered. Uh, however, anything in the future that went forward would have to comply with the ordinance. And if these uses were discontinued, uh, then they would no longer be able to continue. They would essentially phase out.
Could their sales be greater than this number of C, C B D or hemp product?
Let's say again.
Could, if they were to start selling the C B D or hemp today, could their sales be greater than the number in this document that you're proposing? I mean.
Yeah, so it's a good question. So, those are separate uses. So, if they wanted to add that to the equation, they would have to come back in and go through the Board of Adjustment process for a special use permit. It would not be, that would not be, thank you, brought in under what they have now. They'd have to.
So, they could not sell it individually today?
No.
And they couldn't if they came back and applied if we were to adopt this ordinance, because they would be within fifteen-hundred feet of a prohibited uh, disharmonious use.
And this, and I'll upgrade the imaginary, because I know exists, but I don't know if they sell it. So, the vet, if the vet were to sell a C B D product for cats and dogs, which there is, are they precluded from this or is it not an issue because they're not selling the majority?
It, it's the fifty percent rule. And so, um, yeah, incidental, it's, you know, we're, we're, we're not gonna, uh, I'm sure there's some C B D somewhere in town that you can get somewhere. I don't know.
Uh, I would think maybe several K or something like that. I don't know.
Yeah.
So, we do have to open this for public hearing. Are there any other questions from council before we move into that portion? Can I circle back?
So, I thought the two that got approved were selling C B D.
No. And, and as a matter of fact, to pick up on what Rob said, so the special use permit that was granted, uh, had conditions. And conditions did not include anything other than vapor and smoke shop. In, in one case, it was, you know, tobacco and vape, and another it was slight variation on that, but neither one, uh, represented a C B D. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, but I don't think there was any.
Ian, do you remember? Cause I, okay. Yeah, I know, I know. I know the one guy said back there that he, he was gonna sell whatever we allowed him to sell, whatever we allowed him to sell. And that, that's, you know, very concerning.
Zach, thanks for that. We'll go into public comments first. Circle back if we have any more questions for you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person first and then take comments from those joining us via Zoom. Um, I stated before, we did not have anybody sign up on the public comment section outside, but if there is anybody in person that would like to speak, you may do so at this time. Just state your name and address for the record. And if there's no one in person, we will move to anyone online that would like to speak. Just raise your hand and we will call on you. Since there are no comments, we will close this portion of public comments. Are there any additional questions?
Yeah, I just want to talk. I want to understand. Here's where I get more, and then I get to talk a little bit. Sorry about that. Um, so let's go back to the vape shop or the tobacco shop that was in the where you sell license plates, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Had it still been there, and let's say no, uh, schools and churches and houses were not in effect, had it been there under this fifteen-hundred rule, um, that these, these would have not been able to been established.
If, if they predated the ordinance and that's, that's standard, then it's considered pre-existing. Uh, if, if there's no prohibition and they're in place, uh, it's grandfathered, uh, but once the ordinance is in effect, they have to comply. So, uh, there's, there's not a, uh, uh, a broad brush, uh, grant of authority. So, if someone has an operation, uh, and, and, you know, they, they want to do something else, just because they're operating, uh, for something, doesn't mean that they can add, uh, the rest of it. Uh, they would have to get specific approval, and that's why it's all special use permits. So, whether it's vape, tobacco, C B D, hemp, electronic gaming, those are all special use permits. You have to come in and you've got to get, uh, Board of Adjustment approval for any of those. And then the grant is very specific. So, it is for X, Y, and Z. It's not for A, B, C. It, you have to specifically, uh, request and be given, uh, approval for certain use.
Well, they become non-conforming uses because, see, this ordinance was not in place. So, they, they exist legally, but if you do pass this, they will become non-conforming, which means they can still exist, but you can't expand your non-conformity is what it comes down to.
I'm gonna try a third time to answer that question of what I think you asked, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if there was already a vape shop there, these two would not, and, and we had already passed this, these two would not have been able to open because they're within fifteen-hundred feet of another vape shop. And this, it, it would have been prohibited. Um, if that one was in existence and this ordinance was in existence before we get a petition from these two users. Um, so, a- anywhere one of these exist, after we pass this, there will be a fifteen-hundred-foot circle drawn around it and, um, no other vape shop would be able to go in there. And it couldn't also have any of these, um, disharmonious uses. So, what, what I had heard when these two, um, vape shops were approved from the P and Z Board, uh, meeting minutes was, we just don't know what harmonious means. What do you mean harmon- and Zach did his best to say, hey, it's by a park. Uh, you know, these are close to schools, these are close to places that children play, and that just was not clear enough for the board. So, what Zach's doing here is making it very clear. Here are the uses that are not in harmony with this use. Therefore, we're prohibiting fifteen-hundred feet between those uses.
So, but I want to, so within that fifteen-hundred feet next to the, one of these buildings is the Kung-Fu, whatever the gymnasium type thing is, which if nothing, if, if, if that was the only thing around and there was not a church, there was not a park, there was not the other stuff, would it get approved? Because to me, that doesn't fit in one of those categories. The jitsu or whatever you call it.
Yeah, again, um, the, the, in, so essentially, this is a preemption, preemption of clause, if you will. So, if there's any of these where you want to locate within fifteen-hundred, it's not, the board doesn't even see it. It's, it's prohibited.
I, I get that.
We have, we have not included, um, martial arts or ath- or athletics or, or, um, you know, any type of private. And we, we have, you know, done that with churches and schools, et cetera, um, and daycares, but we have not included a private enterprise who provides classes to children for any type of athletic event.
So, I think it's missing that. I don't know how y'all feel about that, because let's, let's scoot this down forty-nine somewhere. I mean, if we just go between parallel and Morehead, that's fourteen-hundred square feet, right? If I'm going in a straight line. If I go from parallel to, um, school circle, it's like twelve-hundred square feet. If I would go from where this previous, where the B M V was in that building to where one of these buildings was, that was like twelve-hundred square feet. So, I feel like fifteen-hundred feet is not big enough. That this could go somewhere out in the booties at some point or down the road some point, that it doesn't meet one of these criteria. I mean.
Wasn't it, wasn't one of the things about being within fifteen-hundred of residential as well?
Correct.
So, if it's within fifteen-hundred of any house, I guess, or
Right.
townhouse or.
Well, yeah, we are, but as we expand and build Bloom, whatever, down Rocky River Road. If there's residential really around here, right? I mean, I don't know what's coming. If, 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 if we can be assured that everything's gonna be next to residential, then we're covered. Well, I think, I mean, if you go down forty-nine, even undeveloped forty-nine, you shoot fifteen-hundred that way, you're gonna head out. Shoot fifteen-hundred that way, then it's out. So, it's. Yeah, but you can't, you can't use those kind of restrictions to make it so you can't have a, a otherwise legal business anywhere in this, in the town. It's, it's the same thing with, um, with, uh, adult businesses. They're legal, but you can't zone them completely out of your town. Uh, you're not allowed to do that. It's a constitutional thing. So, you've got to have someplace for them. And usually, the way you do it is that they, particularly those particular ones, um, they end up in some sort of an industrial area. Um, that's the only place you'd be able to have it, and they may not want to do that, but at least it's able to be done somewhere. So, you can't take a business, you know, like a vape shop, shop, or C B D, which is a legal business, and make it so you can't have that a, any place in your town, because you've zoned it completely out. You just can't do that.
And so, my, my suggestion o- on this is, you know, if there's room for it to be more stringent. And so my, my suggestion on, on this is, you know, if there's room for it to be more stringent, let's dig down on that and let's, let's see, you know, if we can. But I wouldn't throw out the perfect, or throw out the good for, for sake of the perfect. And what we've tried to do here as a staff is say, you know, what are those same uses that we would call harmonious versus non-harmonious in our current ordinance? Let's define those more clearly, and then let's put a, a physical boundary on it that is reasonable and it's within line with what we see in other ordinances, so that it holds up to that scrutiny that, that Rich is talking about, where it's, you know, you're not trying to, you know, do an end around here. So we, we think, we feel very comfortably that CBD vape and the advertising that goes on at those institutions shouldn't be in close proximity, in visual proximity to places where we have captive audiences, right? We've, we've got people going to church, we've got children attending the park, we've got people dropping off children at daycare, and we don't want them to be subject to that same advertising to young kids who aren't supposed to be using this. So we listed that residential being with that as well, and then said, okay, fifteen hundred feet is something that Zach has determined i- is reasonable and within the industry standard. If there's an opportunity to, you know, protect other areas that we haven't thought about in that, we can certainly come back with another text amendment at any time and say, hey, here are things that, that we didn't anticipate that we're seeing now. But this is certainly a, a vast improvement upon the ambiguous guidelines that we have now, that it has to be harmonious and not next to. Well, we're replacing next to with fifteen hundred feet, and we're replacing harmonious with the actual uses.
You could add, and, and I don't recommend doing it tonight, but if there is a modification later date, you could add library, just because this library may not be in a part in the future. So it could be in a different location, but that's the only thing I see.
Yeah, and, and just to Rob's point, we took the standards for the EGO, Electronic Gaming, and replicated them. And so one of the things that Rich can, I think, verify this, consistency is important. So what we don't want is to say, we're gonna do, have a greater standard for this use, but not for this use, and yet you need a special use permit, but we start getting into this discrimination, if you will, to say, you know, how's this different? So to the extent that we can, we're trying to keep it as uniform as possible. I will tell you that adult businesses is twenty-five hundred feet. So again, that, that is a much higher standard, but the fifteen hundred is what the EGO is right now, the electronic gaming, so.
Part of what went on, that playing and zoning with the, the two vape, vape shops is that your, your commercial area along forty-nine is very narrow. And certainly, you want those kind of places in the commercial area, but if you, but part of what playing and zoning was wrestling with was that, you know, you, it's, it's a very narrow area. It's not like it's a big square, and you could put one of those right in the middle, and you wouldn't have any of these other uses around it. So they were, that's part of what they were wrestling with, because we didn't have this in place, so they had to consider it.
So I think, I think it's completely reasonable, and we should go ahead and approve it tonight. I did have one question, though. So we, we've added these two separate entity types.
Right.
And we've excluded them from each other. But neither of these nor the gaming are excluded from each other. Is that a conscious choice? Because they're sort of separate type businesses, so you could, you could end up with a gaming, a gaming and a vape shop right next to each other. I could make a strong argument, that's probably not a great idea. It brings down property values and things like that, but I'm sure was that a conscious decision or something we ought to look at doing in the future?
No, and it's a good, good point. This really would just be for these three uses. We certainly could add EGOs into the list. And, but we would need them to change the electronic gaming as well, to make sure that there was reciprocity, if you will, so that, you know, because the language in there about, you know, fifteen hundred from a like use is in the electronic gaming, so we would have to make that change. And, and Rich, if that's something we can do on the fly, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I think, again, consistency was what drove this amendment anyway. And so if the uses are all considered to be fairly in the same category, then.
I, I'm proposing that we go ahead and approve this one tonight, and then put it on your radar for maybe a further text amendment. I'd rather get this on the books with, with its flaws now, and then deal with some of the other issues that come up.
But the gaming could open up next to these vape shops now anyway, the two that we have.
Correct. But if someone had a conforming vape shop, like next to Foyle's or something, they could stick a gaming right next to it, and then you start trying to choose my words carefully. You start to get those types of businesses that could be considered.
Attractive nuisances.
Businesses, all kind of in one little area.
No, point taken. I, I don't think there was a conscious, at least not on, in our conversations that we'd had internally. I think it was just electronic gaming was thought to be covered by these six uses, which are also excluded on, on, on their distance requirement, and the two were just never thought, you know, how close they'd be to each other, but that is a good point.
And, and I guess, I guess the other point is that if, if you, well, yeah, from, from, from the beginning, if, if an EGO didn't meet the fifteen hundred, then you wouldn't have it there, but if it did, it potentially could be, yeah, a problem.
So with that, we will need to make a motion to approve the text amendment as presented by staff.
We, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, we do need to do the consistency statement, and I'm gonna just, let me back up. So, you know, we've looked at the, the land use plan and U D O, and, and we're primarily focused on a land use plan, but you can see the, the highlights. The plan calls for opportunities to improve the overall appearance of Harrisburg, and then also improve the appearance of the N C forty-nine corridor. And so consistency is what's driving this, and, and we, we believe it's consistent. Therefore, with the land use plan, our recommendation is approval. Planning zoning is also recommended approval. And then the motions would be, this is for approval, and then a consistency statement that would address that as well.
But it's two separate motions, yes. So is there a motion on the floor to approve text amendment as presented by staff to add separation requirements for tobacco stores, vapor shops, and the retail sale of CBD and hemp-based products from each other and certain other uses to add a definition of CBD and hemp-based products, and include on the list of permitted uses allowed by special use permit? So motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. We'll also need a motion for the consistency statement based on the staff report and staff presentation. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the Harris, Harrisburg area land use plan, and it's reasonable and in the public interest. Is there a motion on the floor, floor to approve the consistency statement?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Zach. We do not have any old business this evening, but we do have one item up for new business, and it's the consideration of the fiscal year twenty-two-three budget ordinance amendment for spring youth athletics, and Jim will be joining us again this evening.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to speak of the proposal for the budget ordinance amendment for spring youth athletics F Y twenty-twenty-three. The spring youth athletic program encompassing baseball, softball, and soccer for ages three to seventeen is slated beginning this month, and run through the first week of June. Excuse me. Program registration for the twenty-two, twenty-three seasons has increased significantly from last budget year, which was, last budget year was fall of twenty-one, the spring of twenty-two. Total registration for fall twenty-twenty-one through spring of twenty-twenty-three. These are combined soccer, baseball, and softball. In fall twenty-twenty-one, we had sixty, one thousand six hundred and thirty-three, and spring of twenty-two, two thousand and sixty-two. Fall of twenty-twenty-two, twen- two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. And of course, this year, as we're dealing with increased numbers again, spring of twenty-twenty-three is twenty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight participants. The participation increase impact on all this, total teams fall, fall twenty-twenty-two, one versus where we're at currently today. In fall of twenty-twenty-one, we had a hundred and fifty-one total teams. As we sit today, we have two hundred and eighteen's getting ready to tee it up and hit the fields here in another, well, actually, this week. Total games played amongst all those teams, fall twenty-twenty-one versus spring twenty-twenty-three. In fall twenty-twenty-one, we had five hundred and sixty-nine contests. In spring of twenty-twenty-three, we have approximately seven hundred, and that number isn't for sure yet, considering that we are still building the, the the spring schedule, which is quite a task considering all the young people that we have going and different coaches and the different schedules that they require. In preparation of the twenty-two-three budget, youth athletics budget items were inadvertently underbudgeted. Their current budget does not cover the cost of their remaining expenses due to the following. Considerative budget projections, more participants, more equipment and uniforms for those participants, more games because of all the teams, the increase in teams, and a big one is an increase in game officials' fees, of which we have no control of, with the officials, unions and, and organizations that we contract with. Expenses for spring youth athletics include game officials, equipment, uniforms, end-of-season medals, portages at facilities with no restrooms, and those facilities would be Hocken Woods and Harrisburg Elementary School. So the fiscal impact of the increased participation. The first bullet point here we've got is youth soccer, baseball, and softball revenues and expenditures for F Y twenty-three. We took in three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenues, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand was soccer, and the rest was baseball and softball. Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand in expenditures, and that is after the increased expenditure, expenditures that I've listed below that we'll get to in a moment. For a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar total profit on those programs. The increased planned expenditures, thirty-five thousand for youth soccer, forty-five thousand for youth, youth baseball and softball, for a total of eighty thousand dollars. And the allocation from the budget ordinance amendment request is for, for you folks to consider is twenty thousand dollars in additional revenues, thirty thousand dollars pulled from our other areas of our parks and rec budget, and thirty thousand dollars out of our, out of contingency budget for the town, for an eighty thousand dollar total amendment. And so a motion that I am hoping that you will consider tonight is a motion to approve the F Y twenty-twenty-three budget ordinance amendment for the spring youth athletic season totaling eighty thousand dollars. And thank you for the opportunity to present, and I'll honor any questions and answer them as best I can.
Are any questions for Jim this evening?
Just one, may, may or may not be related. I noticed, I believe it was your second slide. You were comparing that one.
Yes.
Fall to spring numbers. Is that, are they typically similar?
No, actually, it's just.
Previous slide, I was just tracking like fall to fall, and now it's changed over time.
Yeah.
And they were not as much as fall to spring numbers. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, that's just actually fall twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three. I didn't include spring of twenty-two and fall of twenty-two.
Right.
It just went from there, but that's just a, a steady increase, one fifty-one up through. And another thing you have to consider in here is also that we also do participate in some of our, at least, some of our smaller groups that will compete with, say, Concord for softball and baseball. If we host, we do have to honor, you know, have umpires for that, and we go there and they pay for the umpires there, so.
I'm, I'm not against it. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Jim? And is there a motion on the floor to approve the budget ordinance amendment for spring youth athletic season totaling eighty thousand dollars?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Action items. I feel like we had a couple. One dating back to Mallory's presentation on sidewalks. Would you have on that?
I had, I had two action items, and if I miss some, just kidding, then add them. But I had a question about Stallings Caldwell Connection, and looking at the opportunities there, and reporting back. And then I had the one that we just talked about, about electronic gaming and vape distance requirements, and also total distance, whether fifteen hundred was the, was the right number, reviewing both of those and reporting that.
I got two that we didn't discuss that I'd like to throw up. One being point us to the list of infrastructure improvements. And we've discussed it before. I think you said it's out there somewhere. I was in another situation where I wanted to be able to refer to that this past week, and I was like, yeah, I'm not sure where to go find it. And then the other is, I think the door was open, in my opinion, when April presented the proposal for the branding of the fiftieth. I wanna understand that if we enter into agreements that, that with other companies as far as them using our name or resemblance or facilities, that that has a sign-off capacity from the idea that I don't wanna see a business profit from work they've done with us without us being in agreement to use our likeness, resemblance, or facilities.
Yeah, it's an express written permission.
Right.
Process, yes.
So if that doesn't exist, I assume that it should, but if it doesn't, I would like to see how we could create it. If it does exist, then just educate us.
Yep, no, it's a, it does exist, and that's an important part of the process in issuing raises, that someone would request it, that we would issue them express written permission to use it a period of time, what's being approved. In so much that we'll, we'll approve it for specific use. We wouldn't give blanket carte blanche and say, hey, your business can use this as you feel free. We would say, no, you tell us what you wanna use it for, and we'll, we'll approve that purpose.
Does that include the verbiage that they must express, that this is an agreement with the town of Harrisburg?
I didn't, I didn't, I don't know. I didn't think about whether they need to disclaimer it or something like that, but that's something that I can ask and get an understanding of, but I'm getting a lot of nods from the person that would know, so.
Did a, did a good job keeping that list going this evening, and we do not have a closed session this evening. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening? Is there a second on the floor? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you all for joining us this evening.